Welcome, everybody. Before we begin the meeting, we will have a prayer by Councilman Fitzwater, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common.
I will now call to order the Monday, October 16th, 2017 City Council Meeting. Roll call, please. Fitzwater?
Here.
Graham?
Here.
Henry?
Here.
Hussey?
Here.
Kimna?
Here.
Mahalovich?
Here.
Prather?
Here.
Schreiber?
Here.
Ward?
Here.
Weisman?
Here.
Thank you, and I also want to recognize, we have Megan Eldridge with us here this evening, so glad to have you here. Mrs. Powell is, had something this evening, so she is not here, but I do want to say, I believe, this is the first meeting since maybe 1994 that she missed, and I know that she is quite an asset to our city, and we appreciate Mrs. Powell's endless dedication, and since she's not here, I can say that, because I know that she wouldn't like to be recognized that way, but we really do appreciate it, and that's pretty impressive, since 1994. I don't know if there's any city clerk that has that kind of attendance, or any other city representative, so that is pretty cool. But she had a prior engagement this evening, so I said, "You deserve it," after that long, so now, we appreciate having you here this evening. Item three, I will entertain a motion to adopt the agenda with the addition of Item 4C, Officer Sean Dumsday here to accept the, talk about the MAD Award. Is there a motion for the adoption of agenda?
So move, second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item four, miscellaneous agenda items. Mr. Kroll will give us the recognition for Angie Haslag as 2017 Outstanding Employee of the Year.
So tonight, we'd like to formally recognize the recipient of the City of Jefferson Outstanding Service Award for 2017. I will ask this year's recipient, Angie Haslag, to come forward, as well as Department Director Matt Marash. So Angie, come on forward. Matt, come on up. The city has a longstanding tradition of honoring employees who provide outstanding service. This formal recognition started in 1972. A committee of past award recipients reviews each nomination and selects a deserving coworker to be honored as the Outstanding Service Award recipient of the year. This year, the committee came together to select Angely Hasla, Angie Haslag, as the city employee for the 2017 Outstanding Service Award. Ms. Haslag has been recognized at the annual Employee Recognition Lunch on September 28th, 2017. Ms. Haslag began her career with the city of, with the city in 2016, currently serving as Administrative Assistant in the Public Works Department with Matt Marash as the director. Some of the comments noted in Ms. Haslag's Employee Recognition Meeting nomination include the following. Ms. Haslag is a prime example of a team player. Ms. Haslag has always has a positive attitude. Ms. Haslag is often described as the keeper of knowledge for the department. By Ms. Haslag doing her job exceptionally well, it helps others to do their tasks accurately and fosters a teamwork environment, not only for Public Works, but other departments, such as Finance and Information Technology, and Planning and Protective Services. Ms. Haslag helps others follow procurement procedures and often obtains bids for services and other products. By following the procedures and crafting bids and quotes, Ms. Haslag helps ensure the city is receiving the best prices and complying with various rules and regulations. Ms. Haslag is a significant asset for her department and the city. Ms. Haslag is always punctual and rarely misses a day of work. Ms. Haslag always, is always willing to assist where needed, including helping with the front desk when regular backup is not available, or assisting with contributing various department events and meetings. Although Ms. Haslag serves mainly in an internal support position, and the customers are mostly coworkers, Ms. Haslag's contribution to the quality of life within the city are significant and very much appreciated. So it is great pride and appreciation that we recognize Angely Haslag with the City of Jefferson Outstanding Service Award recipient for 2017. And I know she has some family members here. You want to introduce them, or at least have them stand up?
My husband back here, this is Darren. My daughter Kendery, my son Scott, and outside, my mom and my dad, and my sister Cheryl.
All right, well, welcome to everybody. So proud of Angie and all that she does, and I know the mayor has a resolution.
Yes, thank you. Congratulations. Very happy for you. Appreciate your work that you do for the city. It's such a great asset to have here, and we really do appreciate it, and we have some official business to take care of. We have a resolution here this evening, and this resolution recognizes Angie Haslag as 2017 Outstanding Employee, whereas the City of Jefferson has longstanding tradition of honoring employees who provide outstanding service, and whereas numerous employees were nominated by their peers to be considered as the Outstanding Service Award recipient, and whereas a committee of past recipients reviews each nomination and selects a deserving coworker to be honored as the Outstanding Service Award recipient of the year, and whereas Angie Haslag, Administrative Assistant to the Public Works Department, always has a positive attitude and is a prime example of being a team player, and whereas by Angie doing her job well, it helps others do their tasks accurately and fosters a teamwork environment, not only to her department, but other departments as well. Whereas Angie Haslag has been selected as recipient of the City of Jefferson Outstanding Service Award for 2017, now therefore be it resolved that the mayor and city council recognize Angie Haslag for her outstanding service and extends its congratulations for a job well done. Do I have a motion? Any further discussion? All, we'll have a roll call, please. Fitzwater?
Aye.
Graham?
Aye.
Henry?
Aye.
Hussey?
Aye.
Kimna?
Aye.
Mahalovich?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Schreiber?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Weisman?
Aye.
Resolution passes unanimously. Congratulations, Angie, and thank you for all of your service to the City of Jefferson. We'll take a photograph, and if your family would like to come up for the picture, they're welcome to. All right, item B, we have Buckle Up Phone Down Day. We have some representatives here from MoDOT, so we are glad to welcome you here for this, and this is coming up on Friday. It's the first annual Buckle Up Phone Down Day, so tell us a little bit about that.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council. Appreciate the opportunity. I was before this council back in June, and we talked about Buckle Up Phone Down, and really, what's the premise behind what we do, why we're doing this, and we have some cards that are being passed around. There's a little bit of information on it. This is coming up this Friday, the 20th, just a little bit about an event we will hold here in town at the Central Bank at 11 o'clock on the fourth floor, in the dining room. It's open to the public. We're going to have a gathering where we're going to be able to come down and try and spread the word. This really combines the Buckle Up Phone Down, and we did the Buckle Up Phone Down. Everybody got that and appreciate that. This really combines two serious issues in transportation, not just in this state, but nationally, and that is putting a seatbelt on. Missouri is one of a few states that does not have a primary safety belt law. We do have a secondary safety belt law, and we are also one of the very few states, like three states, that doesn't have an all-texting ban while operating a motor vehicle. So these are two things that we've started as an agency, of putting these two together. It is pretty catchy, Buckle Up Phone Down. We actually got Congressman Luke Kamire today to give us the Buckle Up Phone Down. We'll have to work on getting him signed up, though. That part, we didn't get. But, visited with him today and kind of talked a little bit about this, and it is a serious issue when we talk about it. Just some statistics. Fatal car crashes, 63% of the occupants are unbuckled that die in a fatal car crash. 74%, that rate number raises to 74% for teens. That's just staggering. So our teens are very much more susceptible to these issues of car crash fatalities when they're not buckled up. 50% more likely to be in a car crash if you're texting. And these are statistics that we have that come out. They're national numbers, and they hold true for Missouri. So, very important thing that we're really trying to do. We're trying to get the word out. Just a couple of things. This council, the city, actually, has endorsed the Buckle Up Phone Down program. We did get them signed on. We did that after the last meeting. We got some commitments. City, Cole County is also involved, and there's very few cities that have gone online and signed up. Very proud that this city, my city, is part of it, and my county, Cole County. Very few counties involved, too. Cole County Health Department also is in this. And then we have a couple of heavy hitters. Hallmark, which the mayor is very familiar, is on board, and so is Ford Motor Company. So, I mean, we've got some big folks that have stepped up to realize what the issues are when you combine not just these two together, but even individually, these two things are very, can have very disastrous results. So, again, I want to invite everyone here, the council, folks that are here in the audience today, 11 o'clock, Friday morning, at Central Bank. Come on out, be a part of it. We'll have Highway Patrol Lieutenant Scott White, and I hope I didn't just demote him, but I think Lieutenant Scott White will be there to address what the Highway Patrol goes through. We'll have some folks there. I think we'll have some personal stories that will also come along with this, too. So, if I can answer any questions from the council, I'd be happy to.
Thank you, Mr. Sylvester. Any questions of council?
11 o'clock, 11 a.m.
What location?
Central Bank. The main motor bank.
Or the main bank, not the, so the motor bank is different, but the main bank is the one up on High, High Street?
Yes, yes, thank you.
Corner of High Madison, on the fourth floor.
Fourth floor. The dining room.
From 11 to 12.
Yep.
And if people haven't signed up, it's very simple. They just go to mo dot.
mo dot.org, and at the very top, we have a couple of banners right now. The first one that scroll, and the first one that comes up is our program, our highway program, and then the next one that we'll scroll through will be the Buckle Up Phone Down program. Click on that, and you can go to the bottom. Actually, it's at the top of the page now. You can sign up as an individual, or you can sign up as your business. So, I know we have business folks here, and it would be appreciative if that's something that you could get on board with also.
Great. We will look forward to that, and there's just, how can it ever be okay to text while driving, ever? I just don't understand how that can ever be appropriate. So, I think this is fantastic that the city and county are on board, and we will be looking forward to Buckle Up Phone Down Day this Friday, and we'll be hashtagging it and sharing it and taking tons of selfies and telling everybody what to do, although not while driving, of course, but the mayor will be looking and watching and making sure that we all participate. So, appreciate you doing this, because it really is life-saving. I mean, this is definitely something that we need to take a stand as the capital city and encourage the state to follow in what we're doing as well.
And I may have neglected to mention that the mayor is also going to be there at our event Friday.
Yes, that's probably assumed, that the mayor will be there.
That's probably.
We'll do a quick picture if Natalie wants to come up as well, and we'll do a Buckle Up Phone Down so that we can share this and share as much as we can about this event. Thank you. All right, we got it. Thank you all. Thank you. All right. Oh, perfect. I haven't yet. Good deal. Let's introduce our Boy Scouts, too. I don't want to neglect that we do have some Boy Scouts here in the audience this evening, so I would like to invite all of our scouts to the podium, and if they could tell us their name and what school they're from, and maybe if they're working on a badge, too, or a project. We always enjoy having scouts here. I had the honor to attend an Eagle Scout ceremony at the State Capitol last weekend, and that was such an honor. Welcome. Glad to have you all here. Oh, yeah, just pull it on up. There you go.
Hello.
And you can give us your name and what school you go to.
I go to St. Joseph Cathedral School. I am Jack Callahan, and I'm working on my community and the citizen, citizenship and the community merit badge.
Great. Welcome.
My name's Evan Gerber, and I go to St. Joseph Cathedral School. I'm working on the citizenship and the community badge, too.
Great.
My name is Brody Metzger, and I go to St. Martin's Catholic School, and we don't know what badge you're working on right now.
That's all right.
I am John Rush, and I go to St. Joseph Cathedral School. I don't know what we're working on.
Great.
My name is Drew O'Keefe. I go to St. Joseph Cathedral School, and I don't know what we're working on.
Well, thank you all for being here to attend our city council meeting tonight. We're happy to have you here and appreciate it, so thank you for being here. All right, thank you. Item C, we have Mr. Sean Dumsday here this evening, and I would like to welcome Officer Dumsday to the podium to talk about. I want to recognize him for his service to the police department and the community. He won an award at the MAD Dinner last week, and they had, they awarded officers from all around the region, and this is not your first time to win the award, which is fantastic. You are, you've won this award before, so tell us a little bit about why you won this award.
You didn't tell me I was going to have to talk, Mayor. It's an award the Mothers Against Drug Driving started three years ago. I can't remember how many, how many, it was 35 officers this year, multiple agencies, and they just honor the officer from each agency that has the most DWIs for the year. So, I had the most DWIs for our, for our department last year, 2016, so.
Well, we appreciate it very much. Keeping drunk drivers off the road is just critical, and the fact that you've done so well over the last two years, I know that that is a direct result of your commitment to this cause, and it really means a lot, and I'm honored that you were awarded two years in a row for this, and keep up the good work, because it's very important work, and I know that it's something that you strive for, and it makes us proud as council and proud from our police department as well. So, thank you, and it's not something that we take lightly, and that's why I really wanted to make sure that you could be here and that we could recognize you as a council for what you've done, because you have directly saved lives by all of your actions.
Thank you.
So, does council have any comments, questions for our officer? Thank you. And I would like to also get a picture up here and share that, and if all the police officers here would like to come forward that are here this evening, and we could recognize you. So, thank you for your service. All right, thank you. Very proud of him. All right, item five, public hearings. There are none. Item six, appointments by the mayor. We have an appointment for the Environmental Quality Commission. Mrs. Janine Jacobic, is there a motion to approve?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. And also, Mrs. Strope is going to give us an update on Human Relations Commission as well.
Thank you, Mayor. I was asked to just give a little update about the Human Relations Commission and kind of their role. The commission was established to foster mutual understanding and respect among all ethnic, racial, and religious groups, to discourage discrimination and to cooperate with other organizations and agencies with the primary purpose of education. The commission consists of nine members, eight who would be residents, and one could be a resident of Cole County. Some of their powers and duties, it's very much, as I read through these, you'll see it's very much an educational board, and I won't read through all of them, but I'll kind of summarize. They have one prohibition listed, and that is, they are prohibited from hearing cases of alleged discrimination, or acting as a judicial or investigative body on cases of alleged discrimination. The board has been active, I'm sorry, has been inactive for a number of years, their last scheduled meeting actually was in June of 2010. The remaining board members at that time decided to stop meeting for a number of reasons, but the primary reasons were that there was a lack of interest, they were really having a hard time getting a quorum, they didn't have enough members to get quorums, and they had a hard time getting interest in the public to serve on the board. The board members felt that it was duplicative of other organizations, and they felt that it pulled resources away from other organizations in the community, both as far as volunteers, and getting members to serve, and in monetary donations and sponsorships. So, the council has kept this board active, though, as far as in the code, and so it's open and available, so that if those circumstances change, or the need arises, and if we could get nine interested public, you know, members of the public who would like to serve, then they certainly could be appointed and begin to meet again.
Thank you for the update on that, Mrs. Strope. There was a town hall meeting held on October 10th, and that was a specific subject that came up, that people asked what the status was of the Human Relations Commission, if the city wanted to revive that, and it still is on the books, it just isn't filled because of, for the reasons you stated, so certainly people can fill out the volunteer profile form if they're interested. I know a press release went out last week, mentioning that people can apply for this and other boards, city boards and commissions, so we always are looking for interested and dedicated volunteers. So, we want to mention that, so that way we can use this as an opportunity to get the word out, as a direct result of the topic that came up at the open town hall meeting. There are a couple more town halls scheduled, October 24th, and November 7th and 8th, I don't have the locations, I believe the, some of the local churches and school, Jefferson City Public Schools is working with some other groups, and kind of doing some town hall meetings as well, so those are some upcoming dates too, so I'll be sure to share that with them. Does council have any questions about that, or any other commission?
Is that one question?
Yes.
So, is that commission listed under the list of groups that you can select from? It is on there now?
It is, and we do get applications on occasion, it's still listed on the volunteer profile form, so people can apply, and I should have added, we do actually have two names, current names of applications that have been received within the last year for that, for that board.
Thank you.
All right, so, thank you for that update. Item seven, presentations from staff, consultants, and invited guests, we have item A, Mr. Frank Rysick, about the upcoming event at Evening Rotary Club. Welcome.
Mayor Turgeon, city council people, fellow citizens, it's spaghetti supper time. Evening Rotary is having its 12th Annual Spaghetti Dinner on Friday, November 3rd, 4:30 to 7:00 PM. Tickets are $10 for adults, $5 for youth age 6 through 12. A lot of people don't even know what Rotary is. We are an international service organization, we are in 200 countries, plus or minus, kind of depends on how you count them. We are eradicating polio worldwide, there are only three countries left with polio, Nigeria, Afghanistan, and Pakistan. Locally, we work with the Evening Rotary Club, works with the Boys and Girls Club, Head Start, and many other local organizations. You can show up at the door on Friday, November 3rd, pay there, Ken Hussey has tickets, and I thank you, Ken, for inviting me here, he is a fellow Rotarian in Evening Rotary, and Mayor Turgeon is a fellow Rotarian in the Breakfast Club. I see, well, Dave Sylvester left, he's in the Breakfast Club also, and I probably missed somebody. Besides the spaghetti supper, we are having a pick-your-own-prize raffle, and some of the big prizes we have are a time share for cities all over the world, and a free flying lesson from Jefferson City Flying Service. So, to repeat the time and date, Friday, November 3rd, 4:30 PM to 7:00 PM, and I neglected to say the place, Grace Episcopal Church. Hope to see you there, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rysick.
Frank, you left out the best part, who cooks the spaghetti?
And I would like to give special appreciation to our fine, fine cook, Councilman Ken Hussey.
12 years I cooked.
There went the sales, Frank, there went the sales, Frank, there went the sales, Frank.
I start cooking at about noon that day, and you got to let the sauce simmer all day, right Frank? That cooks the best, so come on out that evening.
You've been holding out on us, none of us knew you had this skill.
We're all here.
All right, we will all be there, thank you. Item eight, announcements by mayor, council, and staff, we have our standing committee calendar at JeffersonCityMo.gov, are there any specific committee announcements at this time? All right, I'll start with my announcements. First of all, Happy Bosses' Day, everyone, and I'll say that because I'm kind of the boss of everyone as the mayor, right? I think I'm everybody's boss, so I hope everyone had a good Bosses' Day. And also, I want to announce that tomorrow, C-SPAN will be here at the State Capitol, they have their State Capitol's tour tomorrow on Tuesday, October 17th, from 9:30 to 10:30. We have some information there, I think council does about it, and then they're also going to attend some local schools, so that will be an interesting stop to make, we're glad to have them here at the Capitol. Also, I did a, presented a proclamation today for the Darkness Reigns movie, some of you might have seen it, it premiered yesterday in Jefferson City, it's a movie that was filmed here in Jefferson City, and Andrew Jones, the director, was here in town for the premiere of that movie locally, so we declared it Darkness Reigns Day on October 15th, as a celebration of having the movie filmed here in Jefferson City, and he went back to the state of California, but he talked about how friendly everybody was here in Jefferson City, and we were glad to have him. Andrew's comments after receiving the proclamation were that after shooting two movies in Jefferson City, that he considers it his home away from home, and that he now has an official day, October 15th, is officially Darkness Reigns Day, and he thanks the city for the honor. He says, "I continue to be humbled and honored by the support and generosity we received by everyone in this fine city." So, we're glad to have that recognition, and wish him success, I believe the movie officially comes out in the spring. A few other announcements, Saturday night, I attended the NAACP Dinner, which was held at Lincoln University, and that was a great event. Also, Saturday was the Governor's Mansion Fall into History Event for, events for kids. Saturday was also the Lincoln Blue Tigers Pink Game, and the Ride for the Ribbon, so lots of pink events. Also, was Bel Air Schools 50th Anniversary, and I think the neatest thing was seeing the multiple generations of people who had gone to Bel Air Schools, so that was very, very exciting to celebrate their 50th. On Sunday, the Quinn Chapel dedicated a reading room in honor of Dr. Carolyn Atkins, Councilman Henry was there, and they are looking for council members, or members of the public that would like to come and read at a future meeting, we will have Reverend Cassandra Gould here to fill us in on that opportunity. Last week was the Tom Hinky Golf Classic, Charlie Pride, country singer, was here, and enjoyed his company to promote and support the Special Learning Center, so again, we appreciate Tom Hinky for always stepping up for Special Learning Center in our community. Also, last week was the Special Olympics, they had the opening ceremony at Helius, you probably saw all the athletes here over the weekend, and we got to make the big announcement that Special Olympics will hold their games here for the next four years, so that was a really big deal, so fantastic news, look forward to having them here. A couple other upcoming events, at the next city council meeting, we will have a recognition for the South Side Plan at the November 6th city council meeting, for those that worked very hard on that. And then also, I might have a slide or two in my announcements, I don't know if they have those in the back. Okay, I wanted to announce Capital Arts did a fundraiser Thursday, they called it the Celebrity, but it was Celeb Art-E, get the art in there, for people to contribute art. This was my painting, an original painting of the city hall flag at half-staff, entitled Respect. The next piece of art we have, this was from Councilman Carlos Graham, and he actually created a really nice work of art. Carlos, do you want to elaborate on that at all?
Other than this, the first time I ever tried to do any type of artwork, and this painting here actually has a story behind it, I just want to, if you could just zoom in to the very middle of that picture, you see this little boy right there, I looked at that as being me, and trying to leave, or to, yeah, leave from where I was at, to come to a different place. This painting really was centered around the south, as me being from Alabama, and the white in the background reflects the cotton, and the pen that you see that's right below that little boy's picture was the actual pen of trying to sign to make people free. So, this has a personal story for me, and I was just very glad that it was able to be sold for that event that night. So, first time I ever in my life put a piece of art together, anything like that, so had fun doing it. Dr. James Tatum certainly was a great person to work with, Councilman Henry and I worked together, those hours together from start to finish, so, but this actually has a story behind it, so I was just glad that it was sold for a great cause.
Thank you, Councilman Graham, for your contribution, and the story behind it is very moving, and really appreciate the meaningful, that you, the meaningfulness of this piece of art, and it really comes through in the picture, and appreciate that. And the next one is Councilman Larry Henry, also provided a piece of art that night, and again, another incredible piece, I don't know if you want to give any insight on your inspiration?
This was just called, I actually call this expression, it's an abstract piece, I'm a fan of Michael Baskeyat, who's an abstract artist, or Mikel Baskeyat, and so I kind of got some inspiration from that, and Dr. James Tatum had helped me with the direction for it, and you zoom into it a little bit, you see some different facial expressions in there, and so I just kind of enjoy that type of artwork, and had a really good time doing it for a good cause, Capital Arts Foundation, so, and it sold, so I was happy about that. So, we had a really good time doing that.
We did, thank you again for your inspirational piece too, and I know I did, I tried to bid on both of yours, but they both got out of the mayor's price range, and I know you all attempted even to bid on mine, but I thought that would have been neat to have both of those here at city hall, because they looked so good, but again, I think it's, it was neat to have a lot of community leaders that don't typically do art, and seeing kind of the inspiration they came up with, and supporting a good cause, so wanted to recognize our council members for stepping up and doing that. My last announcement is that we are all wearing pink tonight, and that is, of course, in support of Breast Cancer Awareness Month, and appreciate everyone's showing up and wearing pink, that's something that we can hopefully take a moment to pause and remember, whatever health screenings we need to do. As the mayor, I like to try to promote public health as much as I can, I did get my mammogram this month, and some people said, "Well, that's great," you know, I put it on Facebook, well, I put kind of going there on Facebook, I should say, but anyway, and I had some people say, "Well, that's great, but what about the guys?" Well, guys aren't off the hook, I think regardless of who you are, we need to get our screenings, whatever they may be, listen to your doctor, it's not only about one test, it's about all of our health, and looking at ourselves, at whatever our doctors tell us we need. Don't put it off, I asked, when I got my mammogram, and it's on film, the, talking to the nurse who helped with the test, I said, "Why do people not get their health screenings?" She said, "The two main reasons are they don't want to know the results, or they're too busy." And those are really two things I think everybody can relate to, in fact, I kind of found myself thinking, "Gosh, do I really want to know? Do I want to?" Well, of course, you know, maybe we don't want to know, but we need to know, early detection is so important, and also, do we have time? I mean, if a busy mayor has time, and I know there's busy families and parents out there, then we really all have time, we really owe it to each other to take care of each other, so please encourage others, and that's why we're wearing pink. So, we're going to get a quick picture of the council, if you all would come back here, and we're going to do our wear pink picture, and there's a lot of our firefighters wearing pink, and if there's any other city staff that has pink on and wants to get in our picture, we're going to do a quick photograph, and this is to encourage everybody to get your health screenings and take care of yourself. And it's too bad you couldn't see Rick when he kind of unveiled his state tech hot pink shirt, but, all right, we'll take a quick photograph. to recognize the buildings, the building code ad hoc steering committee.
Well, thank you very much for allowing us to come and recognize what I really call some very hard-working volunteers. Council authorized a resolution back in December of 2015, creating this ad hoc steering committee for code review. Since then, I added up about 100 meetings that the committee has had, with an average of seven members per committee, I'm up where about 960 hours were spent by volunteer time, so it's almost a half year of their efforts to be able to come to this point, where this Saturday, the 2015 codes will be in effect. And mind you, that I just saw the 2018 codes come out, so I think I'd like a little bit of time off before we start another review, but it's very amazing to me to see that many hours put in by so many community volunteers. But with that, though, I also wanted to at least give you some statistics, the last time the 2000, well, the council adopted a code was back in fiscal year 2012. Since then, I've added up a project valuation, up to today, about $470 million worth of construction has gone in this town. 130 of that was the St. Mary's Hospital, but a half billion dollars worth of work is pretty impressive, and that equals to be about maybe 2,400, 2,500 building permits, that doesn't include all the electrical and plumbing. So, we've been averaging about 1,000 transactions a year, so, anyways, though, I just want to at least be able to kind of go over the individual names of people that are still here, and I know I was going And I know I was going to be hoping to be over by 6:30, but anyways, beyond my control. The Chair, Kyle Kitchell, he's working with HB, well, Habitat for Humanity. And right now, he is entertaining some students from Washington University on a bill that came here. So he's not able to attend. Randy Allen is the vice chair. If you want to stand up, Randy? Randy was the vice chair of the steering committee. He also was vice chair of the Building and Energy Code Subcommittee. Randy's also an architect. And also, I think you might know him as president of the Chamber of Commerce. So he's a busy guy.
Thank you very much.
Laurie Branhorst was chair of the Building Code and Energy Subcommittee. And Laurie is a practicing architect here in town. And so anyways, I'll try to keep this shorter. Jim Wish was chair of the existing building code. And Jim's a general contractor in this area for decades.
Thank you, sir.
Let's see. Larry Cobb was busy. He was the vice chair of the existing building code review committee and also vice chair of the fire and property maintenance. Larry's a property owner and developer here in town. I didn't see Jim Dove here. Jim Dove was chair of the Mechanical and Fuel Gas Committee. He's a mechanical engineer and frequents our town on numerous projects. And Dan Clint is not here also. Dan was chair of the residential Subcommittee. He's also was president of HBA during that time. And Dan's an insurance agent here in town. Paula Krieter is vice chair of the residential committee. He won a high-end design for a residential, Paul, that's your, so. And it looks like Jim Crabtree was here, but he has another meeting to go to. Jim was chair of the fire and property maintenance committee. And I think some of you might know, he's an owners representative for Central Bank. So all I can say is thank you very much. I appreciate it.
While you're doing that, also thanks to Larry for all of his work in getting that all coordinated. That was really a lot of work.
All right, thank you. We appreciate the countless hours that that committee has put in and the citizens that volunteer.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just wanted to take a moment to do two things. One, to remind residents of open burning. And the times and dates that will start this year, it'll start as it did last year, November 1st. It'll run through March 1st. A couple reminders, as that season is upon us, we first and foremost would encourage folks to be good neighbors and to talk with your neighbors before burning and look for good weather and environment conditions so that it doesn't become a problem between neighbors as you burn. Other things we want to remember is that you're only allowed to burn during daylight hours. Those fires must be attended at all times. And we also recommend having a means of extinguishment somewhere close by during that time. And also, just as an add-on, October is Fire Prevention Month. And the theme for this year is up on the screen. It's "Every Second Counts: Plan Two Ways Out." And so we'll have information before you and your packets, but also always available at fire stations or at fire administration or on our website. Just reminding folks to have a plan, an exit strategy, to practice that plan regularly. This is a good time to do that with your kids or your family at home. And also, to remember that smoke detectors are key to making that work. Speaking of Fire Prevention Month, I have a couple pictures here of the new fire safety trailer that Cole County Chiefs has been taking donations over the past year. We've been able to get that trailer out to about 1,800 school-aged children this year, and we're still counting. So we're still doing that this month. You can see that it's got a little bit better ladder as they practice their escape out of there with the simulated smoke, which is always, always the highlight of the fire safety visit for those kids. But 14 schools, both public and private, we distribute the Fire Safety Council coloring books as we do that. We're also really excited this year to again partner with Lowe's. And we've not only done smoke detector installs, but also carbon monoxide detectors this year. 87 of those this year, along with replacing batteries for folks and their smoke detectors as we've been out in the evenings last week. And finally, I would just say that we do that throughout the year with the American Red Cross. We do smoke detector installs. We'll come to your house along with Red Cross representatives and work on a fire safety plan, exit strategy, smoke detector install, anytime, for anybody. So be happy to answer any questions. And as always, you can come to your neighborhood fire station or fire administration for more information.
Thank you, Chief Schofield. Does council have any questions or comments? Thank you. We also have some announcements. Mr. Sanders.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have two transit-related public events happening. The first one is tomorrow, we've had a consultant helping us with the Jeff Trans System Wide Assessment. We've gotten that assessment back. It's actually on our website. Tomorrow, between 3:00 and 6:00 p.m., across the hall in the Boone Bancroft Room, we'll be having that meeting. What is nice about this meeting, we will have maps of recommended route changes and also some other changes to Jeff Trans, recommendations only. It would be a great opportunity to come and meet the consultants that actually led the project, if you're interested. It's open to the public and will run between 3:00 and 6:00. The following week, our Coordinated Public Transit Human Services Transportation Plan, that is a mouthful, will be in the same room from 3:00 to 6:00 p.m. That's October 24th. That transit event focuses on transit that includes like oats. It's for folks that are disabled or handicapped. It is a collaborative effort. We've had stakeholders. And what we're trying to do before that meeting is also help prioritize strategies that they've come up with. There's a survey that you can also access on our website. And I would invite folks that are interested in public transportation and transit to join us at both of those meetings. And Jamie has an announcement, too.
Thank you.
Thank you. I just wanted to take a moment and let everybody know that Project Home Connect is this Friday, October 20th, from 9:00 to 2:00 p.m. At the 300 block of East Capitol, we have three churches that have come together that are hosting the event, along with numerous volunteers. I believe there's approximately 200 volunteers that would be assisting with individuals who are at immediate risk of becoming homeless. It's an all-encompassing event to help individuals remove barriers that may be causing the homelessness or their at-risk homelessness, such as the basic medical, the Missouri ID cards, dental services, birth certificates. So if anyone knows of anyone who is or is at risk of homelessness, this event is open to everyone. And lunch will be provided as well. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions? All right. Thanks, Mrs. Abbott. Item nine, are there any announcements from council this evening? Anything else? Okay. Item nine, presentations from the gallery on specific bills or resolutions. Individuals are limited to five minutes. We have signed up one person, Mr. Dick Protsman, for the specific bill is 2017-74. Welcome.
Good evening, Madam Mayor. Ladies and gentlemen of city council, Mr. Crowe and staff. I'm Dirk Protsman, President of Jefferson City, professional firefighter, local 671. And I would humbly like to thank all of you who took time this past two weeks to talk to our members regarding the floating holiday issue. Regardless of the decision you make, knowing that you are willing to hear our views on this strengthens our faith in city government, working for the best interests of all employees. We have felt all along that the intent of this bill was to provide a full day off for all employees and have been glad to openly discuss this with you. We would like to continue meeting with you informally. I am open to any questions you may have. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Protsman? Okay. Thank you very much. Item 10, consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item 11, bills introduced, 2017-77.
An ordinance of the City of Jefferson, Missouri, amending the 2017-2018 budget by authorizing a $640,000 supplemental appropriation within the general fund for the downtown streetscape repair and electric project.
Mr. Marash.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. As the clerk indicated, the bill actually does two things. One, it authorizes a supplemental for our downtown streetscape repair. And also, that includes an electrical element similar to what's going on on Capitol Avenue, $640,000. But also, it approves a change order to our design contract to finalize the design on that electrical system. And we hope to get this going soon in the spring and be finished up before summertime.
Thank you. Any questions? Thanks. 2017-78.
An ordinance amending the code of the City of Jefferson, Missouri pertaining to the Cultural Arts Commission members to correct a typographical error.
Mrs. Strope.
Thank you. This ordinance amends the membership makeup of the Cultural Arts Commission by clarifying one board member is appointed by the Parks and Recreation Commission. This language makes it more consistent with the Environmental Quality Commission, which also falls under the Parks and Recreation Department. There's no fiscal impact, and staff recommends approval. So I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Any questions? Thank you. 2017-79.
An ordinance of the City of Jefferson, Missouri, authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute a $338,694 agreement with GWH Landscape Contracting LLC for the South Lincoln Street project and amending the 2017-2018 budget by authorizing a supplemental appropriation from the general fund.
Mr. Marash.
Thank you. As clerk indicated again, another, the bill does two things, supplemental appropriation for the project, and then also approving the actual contract with the contractor to do the work. As many of you know, last spring, Lincoln Street was washed out by a flood event. And this project would repair that street. We do hope to get some reimbursement from FEMA on the project once we get going. And so we're still ongoing work on that part of it. Be happy to answer any questions. And it does have a check mark. If we could move that project along with one approval, I think the residents in the area have been waiting this project for a while.
Thank you. Any council comments? Councilman Henry? Okay, Councilman Henry has requested to suspend the rules. Are there any objections to suspending the rules?
Need a second for that request.
Any further discussion? So do we really, do we need to?
Okay, no objections.
So seeing no objection, are there any objections to suspending the rules? All right. Seeing none, we will take up 2017-79 for third reading.
An ordinance of the City of Jefferson, Missouri, authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute a $338,694 agreement with GWH Landscape Contracting LLC for the South Lincoln Street project and amending the 2017-2018 budget by authorizing a supplemental appropriation from the general fund.
Any further council deliberation? Councilman Prather?
Just had a question. This is probably from Matt. When do you feel that the work is going to begin?
We do have to wait on our, for some of the work till after November 1 because of batteries. That's a requirement of a permit we got. But we do, would anticipate starting to remove pavement, things like that, and getting the fill site ready.
Any further questions or deliberation? All right, roll call, please.
Fitzwater?
Aye.
Graham?
Aye.
Henry?
Aye.
Hussey?
Aye.
Kimna?
Aye.
Mahalovich?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Schreiber?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Weissman?
Aye.
Bill passes. 2017-80.
An ordinance of the City of Jefferson, Missouri, amending Section 3.3 Alcohol, Drug, and Controlled Substance Abuse Policy of the Personnel Policy Manual.
Mrs. Strope?
Thank you. This ordinance amends the alcohol, drug, and controlled substance abuse policy within the Personnel Policy Manual. Every three years, the Transit Division undergoes a triennial review by the FTA. And one of the things that they look at is the drug and alcohol policy. They've asked us to add language to clarify when an employee is given a post-accident test that is mandated by the FTA as opposed to a part of our policy. The added language does not change our policy or when we test an employee after an accident. And there's no fiscal impact to it. So staff would recommend approving this additional language. And I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have. Any questions?
Thank you. 2017-81.
An ordinance amending Chapter 19 Motor Vehicles and Traffic Schedule D, One-Way Roadways, and Schedule J Parking Prohibited of the Code of the City of Jefferson, Missouri by Designating the 1100 block of Monroe Street Two-Way.
Mr. Marash.
Thank you. As clerk indicated, we are trying to modify the traffic code to allow two-way traffic on Monroe from Woodlawn to Franklin. It's near Cap River Hospital. During the roundabout construction, we did go ahead and have that temporarily signed as two-way traffic as part of a detour. That seemed to work out fairly well. For small costs, we can, this bill would keep that in place ongoing.
Any questions? Thank you. 2017-82.
An ordinance amending Chapter 19 Motor Vehicles and Traffic Schedule J Parking Prohibited of the Code of the City of Jefferson, Missouri pertaining to parking on a portion of Swift's Highway West and within 175 feet of Myrtle Avenue.
Mr. Marash.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Another kind of cleanup-type ordinance, really, related to the Helius construction, but this time came from the neighborhood. Three properties along the southern side, yeah, the southern side of the stadium requested that parking be removed adjacent to their property because of the narrowness of the street. The request went through the Transportation and Traffic Commission for review, and they recommended the council approve it. There may be a substitute at the next meeting. Some of the council has asked me about removing additional parking on the north side of the same street in front of the Helius facility.
Any questions from council? Thank you. 2017-83.
An ordinance amending Chapter 19 Motor Vehicles and Traffic of the Code of the City of Jefferson, Missouri by modification of portions to match existing conditions.
Mr. Marash.
Thank you. So when we do these ordinances, we're open up the traffic code. We try to take a look at them and do any cleanups we notice. So this is a fairly extensive one. But basically, it talks about through roadway, stop intersection, yield signs, and where parking is prohibited. So we went through and tried to clean up the ordinances in areas that did not match the conditions in the field.
Any questions? Thank you. 2017-84.
An ordinance of the City of Jefferson, Missouri, authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute a $126,852 agreement with Bartlett and West for the Clark Avenue Interchange and Corridor Traffic Study Project.
Mr. Marash.
Thank you. As clerk indicated, the traffic study with Bartlett and West on the Clark Avenue area, it goes basically Clark Avenue from East McCarty Street over to Hillcrest, looking at that corridor from a traffic standpoint, identifying the problems and potential solutions there is the goal of the study. The cost is just over $126,000, and approximately $93,658 is an SDP grant we will be utilizing to fund that project. And this is part of our sales tax project on the city-county project list, where we talked about doing some improvements to Clark Avenue. So it's really the first step in identifying the issues, then coming back, maybe looking for other funding sources, maybe partners like MoDOT and other folks, depending on what improvements are necessary. what improvements are necessary.
Any questions? Thank you. 2017-85.
An ordinance of the City of Jefferson, Missouri, authorizing General Fund Supplemental Appropriation of $34,800 within the FY 2018 budget for the purchase of computer hardware and software.
Mr. Sanders?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. In 2014, the city council approved a resolution asking the Planning and Protective Services Department to be more proactive with neighborhood code enforcement. I'd just like to update on that and then ask for a supplemental appropriation in the 2018 budget. If you can see the numbers up there, our code enforcement activities have practically doubled from last year, and actually, they have already doubled to more than 3,000 from 2016. Those increases are due to several things: staff changes. We now have four FTEs, two part-time, and three with military and law enforcement backgrounds. That background has allowed them to be more proactive, just in their training and the way they work and their attitudes. We've also been doing more training for staff. Our full-time property inspectors are not only certified for property inspection, but also for housing inspections, and they're continuing their training, so we've been doing more personal development. We've also been interacting and coordinating more with other departments: police department, fire department, animal control, law, and even finance. Some of our challenges are with habitual offenders. We're looking into actually doing more summons to actually get convictions, to be able to pursue habitual offenders. We also are abandoning building registration process. There are some holes in it. People hide behind LLCs and shell corporations, and they don't always register those buildings, so we can't get those buildings on the registration list. And then also, one of our major hurdles is driving back and forth. We do not have any tools that allow us to do work in the field and check our computer systems back. So that last challenge, we've gone through a process review of what we do and how we work, and we have determined that if we had computer software to be able to access Springbrook and our GIS system out in the field, we would actually, through the course of a year, save $86,000, which is equivalent to 3/4 of an FTE. So what we've looked at is, we've looked at several suites of software to see what's out there. We have an idea that there are several vendors that actually have software that we could use to help us achieve that efficiency of an additional 3/4 FTE person. It would allow us to be more proactive than reactive. The inspectors wouldn't have to drive back and forth. An example is, they have to be back at the office at 2:00 in the afternoon to process letters to get out in the mail. The software would allow them to do the inspection out in the field, hit a button, and have one of our admin techs actually just lick the envelope and put a stamp on it and send it out. They don't be allowed to be more proactive. There'd also be a web portal component to it, so that a citizen or any of you could actually report something online or see if something has been reported. It would also help. Quite often, we get calls from two different sources or two different people, and the same inspector may start working on the same project without being able to know, oh, hey, you've already worked on this. So we'd be -- there are several ways we'd achieve more efficiencies. The software and tablets for five field inspectors and one person inside the office would be about $35,000. There would be ongoing cost of approximately $13,000. The ongoing cost would be offset a little bit by fuel savings. We would catch a lot of the abandoned buildings are not registered voluntarily. We find those, identify those, and then tell the owner they need to register. We also would hope to reduce abatements. Abatements, while there's administrative fee, we don't -- our cost exceeds that fee quite a bit, and we don't always get that abatement money back. And then also, an intangible benefit is property values would go up, which means property taxes would go up. It's like the broken window syndrome. We would help make the neighborhoods a lot more pleasant and valuable, and kind of like Matt says, we'd be cleaning them up. So what we've done is, we discovered that we had $86,000 in fiscal '17 budget left over due to personnel expenses and vacancies. We discovered that late in the year, so we couldn't do any sort of budget transfers to purchase the software. This was a pink sheet item that we did ask for, so what we're asking for is to be able to do a supplemental appropriation using those personnel savings in fiscal '18 to go ahead and purchase the software and move forward. IT has been working with us with looking at the software. There is software that would meet our requirements. We would just need to go ahead and develop a request for proposal and pursue the purchase of the software. So basically, we'll be asking for a supplemental appropriation into next year. Any questions, please?
Councilman Prather?
This was brought up for finance. Are you kidding me?
Yes, yes, the Finance Committee.
And I had asked for you guys to -- there's ongoing expense of $13,000, and that if you could quantify the potential savings or revenues that we're going to be able to offset that $13,000. I was kind of hoping you'd have it for this meeting, but if you can't, don't have it now, can you bring it by the next meeting?
I can certainly try to get that. A lot of those are -- there's intangible and tangible costs. You know, we know there will be some fuel savings. We don't know how many more abandoned building registrations we would get. We don't know what we'd be able to reduce the abatements are. Some of those, we'd have to make educated guesses on things that are purely within my department.
That would be fine. All right. Thank you.
Councilman Mahalovich?
I think this is an excellent move for your department, and I appreciate you bringing it forward, being creative about how to get it paid for. And I also hope that other departments might be able to leverage its software capabilities, maybe even use it for their own departments if that fits. This 348 was -- would be normally rolled back into our fund balance and contribute to next year's fund balance, for which we will not find out exactly what that amount will be in, you know, in January, February, probably a little bit later after audit. But this is an example of those funds that are -- would normally go to the fund balance before the end of the year, but now they're going to be applied here, and I think that's a good move for you.
And if I may add, Councilman, the software suites we've looked at, they all allow for expanding into sort of our building division, which could then tag on and use the same core software. The web component of it, although with the property inspections, we don't do transactions, but it does support online permitting. It supports being able to see where your permit is in process, and those are a couple of the items that Larry's Ad hoc Building Committee has been suggesting we move towards.
Yeah, excellent. And I think you said there -- you might have mentioned it during your testimony, but I might have missed it, but there is a portal for the public to be able to
Yes, sir. Track their requests. There'd be a portal where they could either report an incident. They could see if there's already, oh, I was going to, you know, report there's a, you know, a junk vehicle or something like that on a piece of property in the backyard. They could actually see if that's already been reported and what the status of that is. So you'd be able to, as a citizen also, if you make a report, the inspectors could respond back and say, thank you very much, that was reported yesterday, they've got 10 days to abate it, or we will take care of the issue.
Any further questions? Thank you. 2017-86.
An ordinance of the City of Jefferson, Missouri, amending the 2017-2018 budget of the City of Jefferson, Missouri by appropriating additional funds within the general fund and within the Sales Tax F Fund, as well as re-appropriating funds within the general fund from FY 2017 to FY 2018.
We have Chief Schofield and Mrs. Miller.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This bill would allow us to designate a portion of the funds necessary to proceed with the Fire Station 2 construction project, and it did go through both Public Safety and Finance Committees, in which both those, we made a presentation about the overall scope of the project and discussed some of the detail. Happy to go through any of that tonight. I know we have the architects also here from Architects Alliance. But in general terms, it would be a new facility at the property that was secured on the east side of town at the corner of Robinson Road and East McCarty. This bill also stipulates that we would come back to council before going out for bid, once we have those construction documents finalized and the bid packets prepared. So after the discussion that we had at the Finance Committee meeting last week, we made that commitment to come back and give you guys a better idea of exactly what those construction documents might look like prior to going out for bid. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? Councilman Mahalovich?
I think it was clear that during the Finance Committee meeting that we're -- this isn't an authorization to proceed on any building, and that we have a chance to look at how we are going to finance the entire cost prior to giving that approval and that green light, and more likely in, you might have said that, January timeframe.
That's correct. We would anticipate those documents to be ready sometime in the January, February timeframe. And between now and then, we're going to be working really hard with the Architects, Engineering Team, as well as the group that's been tasked internally to the Fire Department to see if there is any additional efficiencies or cost savings in the plan.
And then, at that time, finance will provide us some level of information with regard to the fund balance that came from this fiscal year that we're in. However, the limitation of that is what at this point, or in January?
We'll have some preliminary numbers by January, but it won't be the audited numbers.
Any further questions? Councilman Graham?
So I guess I have two questions. So I guess, at that point, is that when we say, okay, we're still looking at $900,000, we say that's too big? Bring it down some? Or we say no to at all, period, in January?
I'll take a shot at that question. I guess the final number won't be known until we go out to bid and receive those bids back and open them. So that's where we're still dealing with very tentative projections and estimates at this point. We believe that we'll be able to hone those in a little bit tighter before we make that presentation to you in January for the option to go out to bid. And then hopefully, if we have a competitive bid process, they'll get even better, potentially, and a much sharper number and the exact number to bring back for the contract approval if that's approved by you guys.
So does that $900,000 projection number include FFNE or no?
It does.
It does?
It does. That number includes everything that would be required to complete the project, to our knowledge at this point. And I should also mention that this bill also does have a reappropriation of about $106,000 from FY '17 into FY '18, and those dollars actually are already committed and encumbered for the architectural and engineering services that we've secured to bring us to this point, as well as the entire project should we proceed into '18.
Any further questions? All right. Thank you. Item 12, Bills Pending, 2017-73.
An ordinance of the City of Jefferson, Missouri, amending the fiscal year 2016-2017 budget of the City of Jefferson, Missouri by appropriating additional funds within the Sales Tax F Fund.
Mr. Malmen?
Thank you, Mayor. So this bill makes a supplemental appropriation out of Sales Tax F for capital improvements to the annex building relating to renovations to house future municipal court operations in the top floor of the annex building. Previously, the city has retained the Architects Alliance to engage in what we're calling Phase 1 conceptual drawings to explore the feasibility, renovating the top floor of the annex building to move municipal court over there. That work has been complete, and Architects Alliance has provided a report which is attached to the bill's summary. Essentially, what we plan on doing is clearing out many of the walls in there and making a central place to locate the court. Also, separate the staff area from the general public area, provide some additional security for our court staff, provide offices for a city prosecutor, municipal judge, and then also have some additional amenities for the court, including a client consultation room for defendants to consult their attorneys in a confidential place, bathroom updates, and then also, and this constitutes a large portion of the costs that are included in this project, renovation of the HVAC system. Details are provided in the Architects Alliance report. But essentially, what this bill does is it takes $500,000, which we anticipate to cover the full cost of the project, including construction costs, design costs, and then FFNE, and appropriates those out of Sales Tax F for that project. If this gets approved by the city council, we would immediately move into essentially Phase 2 design, where we would work with the architect to build or to develop construction contracts, lit it out to bid, and the next time you would see this is when we have bids from, final bids from contractors to actually to complete the work.
Thank you. Any council questions or deliberation? Councilman Fitzwater?
I had a couple folks contact me over the last couple of weeks. If there's discussions at the Capitol, and we were talking earlier, in regards to potential additional circuit judge in this area, is, would there be an opportunity for this courtroom to maybe work with the county? If the county, I mean, obviously, if they get another circuit judge, they're going to need a facility. Have there been any preliminary discussions as to maybe an opportunity to work cooperatively?
There has been. I've actually been in touch with both the circuit clerk and then also one of the judges up at the Circuit Court to talk about those opportunities. What I've conveyed to the county officials and what I think is reflected in the Architects Alliance report is a modern courtroom that has all the amenities that one would expect when walking into a courtroom that's been built, you know, in the last few years. And so I think this courtroom has all the amenities necessary for the county to utilize it in that way. And also, it's a really good size for a courtroom here in Cole County. It's 100 seats plus a 20-person, I think it's 18-person jury box, which is larger than any courtroom that Cole County Circuit Clerk or Circuit Court currently has. And so, in addition, in the chance that Cole County gets a fifth judge, even before then, I think there is some opportunity for cooperation between the city and the county to use the space for county purposes and really use it on a more active basis, not just the, you know, day and a half per week that we currently use it for municipal court. I think there's lots of opportunity for that type of cooperation, and I look forward to working on that.
I know you're going to work on the security provisions in addition, or I guess, parallel to this discussion. Do they have any additional requirements, security-wise, that we'd need to be aware of, or is it essentially same type of requirements?
I think it's essentially the same type of requirements. I think that's just a level of detail that we need to get into in order to accommodate them, but I think we're really, really close. I don't think it would be pulling teeth or, you know, doing anything too extreme to accommodate their security needs.
Thank you. Any further questions or deliberation? Roll call, please.
Fitzwater?
Aye.
Graham?
Aye.
Henry?
Aye.
Hussey?
Aye.
Kimna?
Aye.
Mahalovich?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Schreiber?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Weissman?
Aye.
Bill passes. 2017-74.
An ordinance of the City of Jefferson, Missouri, amending Article 11 Paid Holidays of the Personnel Policy Manual to include floating holidays.
Mrs. Strope? Thank you. This ordinance codifies the rules for how floating holiday or paid time off hours will be administered. As you will recall, additional time off was recommended in the Classification and Compensation Plan Study completed by the Austin Peters Group. Therefore, this time was contemplated and approved during the FY '18 budget process. This benefit will increase time off for employees while minimizing cost to the city. Specifically, any unused time will not be paid out upon separation from employment, and all time must be requested and approved in advance so as to minimize overtime costs, loss of efficiency, and departmental disruptions, while still allowing as much flexibility to the employees as possible. Hours given to employees are as equivalently provided as possible based on a percentage of the number of hours they work in a given year. There is little or no expected fiscal impact, and any cost will be absorbed in the council adopted budget. Staff appreciates council's support of this benefit and recommends approval, and I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Any questions for Mrs. Strope? Councilman Mahalovich?
I've got a substitute to offer. I'd like to substitute from in the packet, 2017-74, number 2.
So we have a motion for substitute. Can I have a second? Councilman Hussey? So any further discussion on the substitute? Councilman Mahalovich?
I've got amendment to that substitute. I'd like to amend Paragraph 1, excuse me, A, by editing it, excuse me, strike that, yeah. Paragraph A by
Councilman Mahalovich?
Does that make the substitute, the law of the land?
No, no, that would just bring the substitute up for consideration.
Okay. Thank you for the clarification.
So we have a motion and second for substitute number two. So at this time, Ryan, we would want to take a vote to accept the substitute, and then we will take up the bill as substituted, correct?
That would be correct.
Okay.
Subject to any amendments.
Okay, any further discussion, and at this time, we'll have a roll call to accept the substitute number two, the motion that's on the table. Okay, roll call, please.
Fitzwater?
Aye.
Graham?
Aye.
Henry?
Aye.
Hussey?
Aye.
Kimna?
Aye.
Mahalovich?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Schreiber?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Weissman?
Aye.
Substitute passes, so at this time, we'll take up the bill as substituted. Councilman Mahalovich?
I'd like to amend the substitute. First of all, by amending paragraph A to strike out R more, so, R more, and then strike the S on holidays, so we'll say credit with one floating holiday per fiscal year.
We have a motion and second for the amendment. Are there any further discussion on the amendment? So we need to vote to accept the amendment, correct? Okay. Roll call, please.
Fitzwater?
Aye.
Graham?
Aye.
Henry?
Aye.
Hussey?
Aye.
Kimna?
Aye.
Mahalovich?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Schreiber?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Weissman?
Aye.
The amendment passes, so at this time, we'll take up the substitute bill as amended. Any further discussion on that? Councilman Mahalovich?
I'd like to amend. I took a breath, and I got a second on that when we voted, but I had two amendments, actually, or it'll be now two. Okay, I'd like to also amend paragraph B, the last sentence, and strike out the sentence that says, "The city administrator may determine the number of floating holidays provided each year." That'll be struck as the amendment.
So we have a motion and a second on the second amendment. Any further discussion on that? Roll call, please.
Fitzwater?
Aye.
Graham?
Aye.
Henry?
Aye.
Hussey?
Aye.
Kimna?
Aye.
Mahalovich?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Schreiber?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Weissman?
Aye.
So the other second amendment has passed, so we'll take up the bill as substituted and amended twice. Councilman Mahalovich?
This was introduced when I was out west, and before I could get back, I had Councilman Graham at my front door greeting me to look at this a little bit tighter. So after our meeting with Councilman Graham and staff, we were able to come with this substitute. Thank you.
Further discussion?
Would it be wise to say what's in the substitute? I'm not certain. Was it in the printed packets for everybody? I mean, you're, it's your bill.
This is not in the packets.
I mean, at least the major change that I'm sure is of interest here, Councilman Mahalovich.
Thank you.
It's not in the package.
I can make that clarification. Essentially, it treats a shift as a shift as a shift. If you have an eight-hour shift, you have a ten-hour shift, or you have a twenty-four-point-two-five shift, it's a floating holiday, includes a shift. So in the case of, in case of firemen, they're twenty-four-point-two-five, and we had them at twelve hours instead of twenty-four-point-two-five. We had policemen at ten hours, it stays at ten hours, and forty-hour work week employees stay at eight hours.
And part-time stayed at four.
At four, thank you.
Any further comments, questions? Councilman Hussey?
I guess, just for clarity, we asked it across the hall. I think the question, when we talked about this topic four years ago in the budget process, was always about revenue and revenue neutral and those sorts of things. And so, Mrs. Mueller, I think you made a comment across the hall about there's not an ask for an increase in appropriations, and so we see that as somewhat revenue or expense neutral, I guess.
That's correct. There is no budget amendment that accompanies this bill.
Further questions or deliberation? Okay. Seeing none, roll call, please.
Fitzwater?
Aye.
Graham?
Aye.
Henry?
Aye.
Hussey?
Aye.
Kimna?
Aye.
Mahalovich?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Schreiber?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Weissman?
Aye.
Bill passes. Twenty seventeen seventy-five.
An ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri, authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute a supplemental agreement with the Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission for Surface Transportation Program Funds.
Mr. Sanders?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This is a second supplemental to an existing grant. The grant expires at the end of this fiscal year. We still have a large amount of funds to expend on specifically for a travel demand model, which will result in a list of recommended transportation improvements, which Public Works, Cole County Public Works, and other Campo member agencies would benefit from. At budget time, we knew we weren't going to get the project off, started. We thought we might be able to get it started a little bit, so most of the money is in fiscal twenty eighteen. Thirty thousand dollars is not in fiscal eighteen, so this bill would authorize an extension of the grant contract for one more fiscal year, and also reappropriate that thirty thousand dollars, of which only four thousand five hundred dollars is the city match as part of that grant program. Be glad to answer any questions.
Any questions? Roll call, please.
Fitzwater?
Aye.
Graham?
Aye.
Henry?
Aye.
Hussey?
Aye.
Kimna?
Aye.
Mahalovich?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Schreiber?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Weissman?
Aye.
Bill passes. Twenty seventeen seventy-six.
An ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri, amending the twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen budget of the city of Jefferson, Missouri, by adding employees within the Public Works Street Division personnel schedule for a new crew to work on stormwater projects.
Mr. Marash?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This bill kind of grew out of our discussions about what to do with the recently appropriated seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars for stormwater. The staff looked at the best how to spend that, those funds, and developed a couple scenarios for our Public Works Committee, one in which we would do traditional design bid build projects with the money, the other kind of a blended approach, which is the result of this bill, where we would recommend to hire a street crew to work on stormwater, essentially, as their full-time work, and then also use the remainder of the funds for our traditional design bid build projects. So kind of a blended approach. A lot of discussion at the Public Works and Planning Committee about it. The two scenarios were attached to the bill that we discussed, and the committee recommended this approach. Be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? Councilman Henry?
And Mr. Marash, just for the public's sake, your thoughts on the most effective way for those funds are for the street crew, correct?
Right. We looked at, you know, what's the quickest and most efficient, cost-efficient way to get those funds on our neighborhood stormwater system? So really, what the crew would do initially would, we'd look at our overlay, pending overlay list for the year, kind of go around and look at our crossroad pipes, inlets, work on those, and then also our complaint list that we have, as we've talked about a lot of times in the past, got about a twenty million dollar complaint list on, you know, holes in people's yards, things like that, sinkholes, and work on some of those projects as well with this crew.
Further questions or deliberation? Councilman Hussey?
I'm just curious if this passes this evening, what's the timeframe before a crew is up and running, supplies in hand, to start working on things?
Yeah, the, I think it amends the twenty seventeen, eighteen budget, which starts November one, although you could go ahead and start advertising for those positions. I mean, it might, quite frankly, it could be other in-house staff interested in these jobs, and, you know, backfilling other jobs. I mean, it could be quite quick. So we would anticipate, the material monies are in place with the seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars as well in the new budget, so could be quite quick, depending on the weather this winter. We can get a lot of pipe work done in the wintertime. Thank you.
Further questions or deliberation? Councilman Prather?
I've got a few of them. And first of all, I'd like to thank Mrs. Miller for sending out those forecasts that we all received. And one of those forecasts, if we do this, the two hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year, basically puts our fund balance at possibly five percent in about five years.
Yeah, there's, there were two versions of the five-year forecast, one being the version that has normally been presented during the budget hearings. The other one also has a line added for those projected unexpended over the years. So it's a range anywhere from five to, I don't have the document in front of me, but it was a little over five percent to twenty-seven percent, could be the ending fund balance by fiscal year, fiscal year two thousand twenty-two.
And all these bills we've had tonight introduced and passed that are dipping into the fund balance, including the fire station, has that been included in those numbers?
The Lincoln Street was included in that projection.
And is there anything else that was introduced tonight that has not been included? Well, I mean, the fire station, I don't believe has.
No.
So if we went that direction, that would probably put us under the seventeen percent? And lower than three percent in five years, potentially?
Well, it would be a one-time, so it wouldn't have that exponential effect-
Sure.
-like the stormwater crew does in the personnel line. But, I mean, we could give you the various versions of the five-year forecast with those lines added.
I just mean, it could be worse. You don't necessarily have to give that to us.
Yeah.
And another comment would be that this is, the way it's in here today is two hundred and fifty thousand dollars that we are putting forth for not just this fiscal year, but ongoing.
That was the exercise on the five-year forecast.
Okay, so-
Which was the stormwater crew plus materials for the stormwater crew. So, and I think Mr. Marash had testified that he would know more after a year of how much those materials needed to be ongoing.
Okay. But if we take the two hundred and fifty thousand, that's suggested, and we have a potential loss of another two hundred and fifty thousand, which we are currently receiving for revenue on out-of-state vehicles, use tax, I believe, which could end potentially at the end of next year?
Correct. That, November of two thousand and eighteen, that out-of-state local sales tax will no longer be able to be collected unless there's action by the, in a ballot measure for that or a use tax.
Okay, so conceivably, you could have two hundred and fifty thousand dollars as projected for this ongoing expense, and they add another two hundred and fifty thousand dollars to it, which we may not have, would bring us about half a million dollars. We could potentially be in the hole at the end of next year for ongoing, you know, budgetary forecast. So I guess my problem is that I don't feel comfortable putting future councils at risk. We've had a one point six million dollar hit before, and I know I'm a very conservative person, I know maybe not everybody agrees with me, but that's how I do my own forecasts, is on monies that you do have, not monies that you have someday or may not have. So there is another, I guess what I'm trying to tell everybody is there is another option. The other option was to have staff spend that seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars on projects that they deem fit, that would be, you know, best service, the problems that we're having. That was the other option. So that's still on the table. That's not the only one that we can talk about tonight. I'm just saying, that's, that was my, that's what I wanted, but I was basically outvoted on that one. So just wanted to make sure that everybody understands that we have a potential half a million dollars that we're going to have to deal with at next year or the year after. So that's all I got.
Councilman Hussey?
And Councilman Prather, I appreciate your perspective, and I think that you shared that before. Anytime we pass a salary increase for staff, it puts a future council at risk. Anytime we make those ongoing long-term budget adjustments, using that same logic, it does, it certainly does the same thing. If we pass a four percent or a two percent salary increase, that moves the personnel line item year after year after year, and grows that budget item in the same mindset that I think you're using when you talk about additional staff. It changes, at least that's the perspective I see it. The five, even if we don't hire the crew, the five-year projection, when you don't take in the unspent expenditures line item that is included in those projections, the fund balance gets down to ten percent. And so, when we don't actually have efficient operations on the expense side, like, we're able to have a healthy fund balance because of the fact that we budget a certain dollar amount, and staff do a good job of coming in below that mark, and have traditionally come in even better than four percent below it. And so, we sort of built our long-term projections off of that assumption that they're going to be efficient like that. I understand the concern about the out-of-state vehicle tax. I think that we can work out a resolution to put something on there. I feel like we made a decision to authorize seven hundred and fifty thousand. Staff came to us and said, this is the most efficient, cost-effective way to accomplish that. I guess I'd have confidence in staff to make sure that there's a long-term plan on how to operate that. I don't want to necessarily bank on attrition and turnover to assume that's always going to be the case. I, the crew and the dollars for the projects help them sort of make a lot of change in the community. I guess, take off the cost thing, I favor the crew model in the sense that I think that the estimates say they can tackle twenty projects around the community. I think that puts them in a lot of wards, a lot of neighborhoods, as opposed to basically, if we went scenario B, we'd essentially be adding one more major project, I think what the estimate said. And so some of that small project troubleshooting probably still wouldn't happen. And while the major project is what we hear a lot about, I think a lot of the concerns that get brought to me from constituents and maybe to others are sometimes small fixes. And they just want a crew to come out and tackle that particular project. And so I sort of see the crew as like a, it gives staff the ability to really go out and, you know, respond to things as they come up, and it gives staff flexibility to sort of be nimble in terms of stormwater while also set aside some dollars for major projects. The reality of the situation, just long-term, and we're talking about long-term funding and those concerns, we still have to figure out a stormwater funding source long-term. Like, we're going to spend seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars somehow, some way, whether that's A or B, for a year, and we still have thirty to forty million dollars on the list that needs to be tackled as well. And so, it's a step forward, but we still have a big conversation to have that could address some of these long-term concerns as well. I guess I favor scenario A. Maybe I'm looking at it through rose-colored glasses too much, but I think it's the pink on Councilman Mahalovich's shirt tonight that's... But I think we can work through those things, and I think that it's the council's responsibility to work through them as well. You know, the long-term budget forecast project, I think a two percent raise is built in all of those projections, and some other increases on expenses and such. Maybe the hard conversation has to come in the next budget or two about, you know, I understand salary increases are important and benefits are important, but at the same time, delivery of services is important as well, and how do we best effectively do that and tackle that? But if we want to play the we could have this, we could have that game, like, we can paint that on a lot of different scenarios as well. I guess I would say staff has come to us with a workable plan. I think it's an efficient, efficient, effective way to spend those dollars, and that the work is on us to figure it out long-term.
Councilman Mahalovich, or Prather?
Just one thing, and I don't want to get back and forth on this, but when you mentioned that in the budget, we plan a two percent increase, I understand that. The biggest difference is we have revenues projected offset that. Where this, we do not in the coming years. It's a hole we're going to have to fill. And I think these are very conservative estimates. I think it could be a lot worse. So like I said, I have a business, I, that's, I wouldn't treat this any different than I would my own, and that's where I'm coming from.
Councilman Mahalovich?
Yeah, this is a discussion not about wastewater or stormwater. It's a discussion about budget, how we're going to deal with it. And I do appreciate- Uh, and I do appreciate staff bringing forth a creative way to spend this dollar in a very efficient way, but the fact is, uh, from my chair, um, we're spending what I think is 1.5 million dollars out of our fund balance already on stormwater. I'm, I'm counting Lincoln Street, actually. And that, that's a, well, take, take away 400,000, 400,000, and you got 1.5, 1.1 million. That's still a substantial amount of commitment by this council to, to go towards stormwater. As a matter of fact, we pulled it out of the budget process, put it back on so that the money could start being spent before the fiscal year. Uh, that was our decision to move it forward and faster and hopefully get some things resolved, so when people, uh, when it rains, people aren't rushing to high ground. Um, we did approve the, the budget, and, uh, this is a substantial change to the budget, and, um, that, that budget called for, uh, one FTE that we all agreed to change. Other than that, it, the budget came to us in a pretty, pretty full manner. It was already deliberated. It was every department came about and said what they wanted and needed and presented us with pink sheets. Many of the pink sheets I agree with. So if you gave me a pot of money, I might even pick a lot of those pink sheet items over the kinds of costs where, you know, we, if you put it on the table, I think it could come out less. It, it, there may be a flaw in the budget process. The fact that this council, all of us, decided to spend 750,000 before the budget season gone through, and had maybe our planners and our mayor and our administrator knew that we were committed to a million dollars, they could have built that on the expense side. Maybe we would have been debating it differently today. But we didn't telegraph that to our budget process, and maybe, I don't know, uh, what is a better process. But the fact is, we do have a budget process that I would, that I think we would, we would create a precedent for people to bypass the, the process. Even tonight, and people could check my math on this, but I'm looking at 2.25 million dollars that we took out of fund balance tonight, or are deliberating taking fund balance. We got firemen, uh, Fire Station Two, we got, uh, the things happening there on, um, on the, uh, streetscapes and, and, and all around town, we got the, the South Side Plan that's presenting us with some budget challenges. Uh, so, so I'm, I'm also looking at our wish list, the fund balance wish list, and some of these things, I think, uh, neighborhood sidewalk repair, economic development project, downtown event support, street sweeper, um, and some remodeling of buildings. That's not to mention our capital needs that we haven't even talked about. We have a sinking fund of 300,000. This year, we took 100,000 out of that, which I'm not, I mean, we had to do what we had to do. So our needs always exceed what we have. But, but my fear is that we have, let's just not, uh, the, on the revenue uncertainty side, we do have, uh, I think, a high watermark to make on our sales tax. We're not, we're behind on our sales tax this year, and we'll make it up on the revenue side through other, uh, items, I'm pretty sure. But we've never made 1.114 on our revenue, and we're projecting that for next year, and we're not even making 11.3 this year. Um, furthermore, we, we have the aforementioned, um, automobile tax that will go away unless voters come to us and say, "We approve that." So if there's a voter rolling the dice to see if they will, I think they'll support us. I believe they will, but that's the revenue uncertainty. On the expense side, we have, again, Fire Station Two, we have salary and compensation study that's, that's, uh, addressed us with some challenges, and, and our city administrator said that the, the one thing he didn't like about our budget he presented to us is it was low on the salary compensation side. And then there's a thing called, um, revenue, or, um, compression, salary compression. We got experienced, uh, I know at least on the firemen and police, we got experienced people on, that are making the same thing, uh, and we haven't quite addressed that. So we have challenges there as well, um, uh, not to mention the pink sheet items. So I believe in the process, the budget process. I believe that a long-term, uh, funding stream is necessary for us to handle the stormwater, and I'm, I'm, I'm hoping and I'm convinced that the good people of, of the, of the community plus will inspire us or will come to us and say, "We really need this bad," because it's the voters who will decide whether or not our priorities are aligned. And I would, I would welcome their input in a long-term funding solution that, that gets us not just this problem solved, but be able to address many of the highest priority items. I guess that's, that's, the, the fund balance program, what is left over in the fund balance is the things that make some of the things happen, that put the pieces together. And I'm fearing we're going to lose this. We're going to lose our fund balance list, and we're not going to be able to, um, to do some of these items that our, our citizens get a lot of, a lot of benefit from. This downtown sidewalk project is tremendous. I'm really looking forward to that. We put, and, and thanks to staff, because we budgeted 700,000 out of fund balance, and we came to us tonight with 640,000. So, uh, they looked at the project, they're going to get downtown, looking back to where it was when we had our remodel 10 years ago or stuff. Uh, so I'm, I'm really looking forward to that. Wouldn't have happened unless we have fund balance. So that's, um, thank you.
Councilman Prather?
And one thing I want to reemphasize, that, uh, this vote tonight does not get rid of the 750,000. It's going to stay there, whether it's voted, approved or not. It's just how we spend it is what it comes down to. So I just want to make sure that everybody knows that we are going to spend the 750,000. All's worth debate on is how.
Councilwoman Ward?
But that's $750,000. Uh, we won't get as many projects completed with those if we have to bid and contract those out, whereas if we had a crew in-house who you were able to quickly send out in the field and do the work immediately, correct?
Right, they would focus on the smaller neighborhood projects, uh, St. Colson Yard, Cross Road, Pikes, things like that.
And I think all of us, or most of us, have received calls from constituents where, I know I, I have, where during rainstorms, families aren't sleeping at night because water's rushing down into their homes, into their garages, into their basements, and, and, you know, I respect the process too, but when a critical issue comes before us, I think we need to look at it in different ways and try to get it to happen. Um, you know, that list, you know, the word you used was a wish list, and those are all wonderful things for our, for our city, um, but a lot of those things are aesthetics, and yes, that will better our city and bring, uh, economic development to our city, but there comes a time where we have to look at the criti- critical issues and, and the health and welfare, you know, of our citizens here.
Councilman, Councilman Prather?
You said a question, Matt, you go on with Councilwoman Ward, you just indicated about all the people that are calling, the ones that are having water go through their basement. Can you give me a percentage or a number that this is going to help fix of those problems, that 1.2 million?
Uh, the 1.2 million?
Well, you said that with those number of jobs we could probably get done if we hired those three employees.
Oh, we had on the list, uh, a couple areas over in Sioux Drive, Inglewood and Timber Trail to, uh, to help, uh, improve the stormwater collection in those areas.
So what percentage would you say that 1.2 would that be?
Well, let's see, I can-
I guess what you're saying is that couldn't be covered with the 750,000?
You're talking about the 1.2 was scenario A-
Yes, correct.
Compared to scenario B-
Correct, correct.
Is what he's saying.
Uh, I'm not following the logic of the math, but, uh-
Well, you're, you gave us the number of 1.2 million. I'm not sure where that came from either, but, uh, 750,000, you're talking about two projects. Well, I'm just trying to figure out how much of those two projects going to cost out of the 1.2, what, the number we were given is 1.2 million. I'm not sure if that's correct or not, but that's what we're giving.
Maybe it was the 750,000 plus the 323,000 that we're already committed for, 363.
I'm not, I guess what I was told is-
That's still the way I could come up with 1. whatever you're talking about.
Well, what I, what I understood, and you can tell me where I'm off on this, is one of the presentations that we were given, and I, that's what impressed me, was that the amount that this crew could do within a year was approximately 1.2 million dollars worth of, of corrections.
Oh, yeah, that, you mean the difference of the two.
Right.
Yeah, the difference of the two programs.
So what I'm trying to figure, what percentage of that is going, going to help those people that are having a, a problem right now?
Uh, yeah, if I, if I have, if I think I have what you're saying. So, yeah, we've added it on here, uh, four or five, eight hundred, so about three-quarters of that is, is that flood-related type.
So the people that are calling, that are having a problem, you're going to be able to fix three-quarters of them?
I said, we'll improve their stormwater situation. Sometimes you can't completely resolve some of the issues.
I mean, I, I just sort of, is this just the cosmetic stuff that we're doing outside that's going to help some, or is this actually going to alleviate the problems that were happening?
No, it's not.
Those are ones, I guess my point is, those are the ones we want to help the most, is the ones that are actually having the big issues.
Well, the, uh, it, it depends on, when you say want to help the most, uh, we, we really want to try to alleviate a lot of problems with this, better collection, whether it's a hole in your yard or flooding, so, I mean, stormwater's very theoretical, obviously, and so if you improve the collection system, it's not cosmetic. It's, it's bigger inlets, bigger pipe sizes, things like that will improve the stormwater collection. Now, if you have a massive storm that overtops that, you'd still have flooding scenarios. So you can't, can't really guarantee nobody's going to flood in, in many cases, but-
I just want to make sure we're helping out, you know, do, getting the best bang for our buck is all.
Certainly.
Councilman Fitzwater?
I would just kind of make a comment, and I appreciate the work that you guys do on the budget. I, I agree with you. I don't like to eat in the seed corn. I mean, we can't project the future. We, as council, approved 750,000 dollars, and then we asked Matt to give us a recommendation on how to most efficiently utilize those dollars. I believe as part of his presentation, there was an understanding that we get to budget next year and we can't fund that 250,000, we may be eliminating three positions, but we asked them to do it most efficiently. They come back and, you know, I think, looking at the, the, the projects that we've been presented, this is the most efficient way to get as many of them done as possible, but, I mean, I, I fully am aware that we may have to sit here next year and say, "We can't fund that," and we may, may need to back it out, so. I mean, I think this gets us the best bang for our buck, and a year from now, we look at it and see what's available.
Councilman Henry?
I'm just calling for the question.
So do we need a second on the call for the question? Is there a second? So we have a motion and a second to call for the question. Um, any further discussion on that? So we need roll call, please, to call for the question.
Fitzwater?
Aye.
Graham?
Aye.
Henry?
Aye.
Hesse?
Aye.
Kimna?
Aye.
Mahalovich?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Schreiber?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Weissman?
Aye.
Motion passes, so at this time, we will take that 201776. Roll call, please.
Fitzwater?
Aye.
Graham?
Aye.
Henry?
Aye.
Hesse?
Aye.
Kimna?
Aye.
Mahalovich?
Nay.
Prather?
Nay.
Schreiber?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Weissman?
Aye.
Motion passes, or bill passes eight to two, is that correct?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Uh, item 13, informal calendar, there's nothing on there. Item 14, resolutions, uh, 201713.
A resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute a contract with the Jefferson City Area Chamber of Commerce for Economic Development Services.
Mr. Mullman?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, this resolution, um, approves a contract with the Jefferson City Area Chamber of Commerce to procure a ec- economic development services for fiscal year 201718, and also adds options for four additional, um, four additional, uh, annual terms to that contract. Um, the current, uh, uh, cost of these services for fiscal year 1718 is 185,000 dollars, which is, um, um, consistent with the current fiscal year's cost and has already been, um, allocated in the fiscal 1718 budget. Um, some amendments to the, uh, contract from previous amendments. Um, it cleans up some language regarding liaisons to the, uh, Chamber for Economic Development Activities. Previously, the contracts specified some specific groups that, uh, the city was to name liaisons to. Um, in consultation with, uh, chamber staff, um, we've come up with a, a solution that the city will name liaisons, uh, to the, uh, Chamber for all of its economic development purposes. So therefore, if the Chamber needs, um, has, is in need for liaisons to the city, uh, the council has provided for those as opposed to just naming them to certain groups. Um, then also, it adds a mechanism for the, uh, Chamber to make a fee proposal by June 1 of, uh, of any given year in which the contract is in effect. That way, we get that fee proposal in advance of the budget cycle, and so that way, uh, the, the city council can, can consider that fee proposal, um, in its preparation of the budget, and so that way, we have that in advance. Um, one final change in the, in the contract, I think there's an elimination of one of the matrices that was in the previous contract relating to property values in the Old Town area. I think the, uh, Chamber has found that to be difficult to give a meaningful number to, and so, um, I don't think they're eliminating it from their general program, but that specific matrix and how it's reported to the city council is removed off of the, uh, off, removed off of the, uh, deliverables that the, that the Chamber is, uh, to provide to the city. Um, Mr. Randy Allen and, uh, Ms. Wickenborg, uh, from the, and Ms. Bono, Bono from the, uh, Chamber are here to answer any questions, um, and I can also address any questions that the council has on this. Um, I will note that, uh, the city code, uh, gives this type of contract some special treatment in the bidding process, so this was not bid, um, out in a manner that's consistent with city code. Um, and that's also, um, a reason why you're seeing this as a resolution and not, uh, and not in the form of ordinance, is that the city code suggests that these types of contracts should be approved by, by resolution as well.
Any questions? Okay, is there a motion to, oh, question?
I moved it.
Okay. A motion and a second. Um, any further discussion on the resolution? Oh, Councilman Mahalovich?
Yes, fortunately, fortunately, rules of construction say that the written-out word will govern over the, uh, over the numerical, um, those are, there, I found a couple of scrivenirs' errors. I have to apologize. Those will be addressed and corrected prior to execution and attached to the official copy of the ordinance. Thank you.
I thank the counselor to my right, Ford.
Me as well. Thank you.
Any further discussion on the bill or our resolution? Roll call, please.
Fitzwater?
Aye.
Graham?
Aye.
Henry?
Aye.
Hesse?
Aye.
Kimna?
Aye.
Mahalovich?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Schreiber?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Weissman?
Aye.
Resolution passes, and thank you to our Chamber representatives for being here and all the work that you do. Appreciate it very much. Um, and then I also forgot to thank Architects Alliance for being here on Bill 201773, so appreciate you as well. Um, item 15, presentations from the gallery on other topics, there are none. Item 16, council and sta- staff discussion of presentation topics, any discussion? Um, item 17, new business, any new business? Item eight, at this time, we will go into closed session pursuant to Section 610.021 of the revised statutes of Missouri. The chair will entertain a motion to go into closed session to discuss the following: hiring, firing, disciplinary, or promoting of particular employees, Section 610.0213.
Second.
Mayor, if I, if I, if I may, um, can we have the motion clarified that the council will reconvene back to open session?
Okay, so to discuss the following, uh, and at the end of my motion, I would say that then we will, uh, reconvene in open session after the closed session. Okay? We will meet, uh, we will move the closed session to across the hall, so if anybody wishes to stay in council chambers during the closed session, they can. So we will move across the hall, and then we will come back to reconvene.
And I'd say other staff, sorry, can, can go.
Is there a second on the revised motion?
Uh, yes, the second was, uh- Mahalovich. So, uh, roll call, please.
Uh, Fitzwater?
Aye.
Graham?
Aye.
Henry?
Aye.
Hesse?
Aye.
Kimna?
Aye.
Mahalovich?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Schreiber?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Weissman?
Aye.
Graham?
Aye.
Henry?
Aye.
Hussey?
Aye.
Kimna?
Aye.
Mahalovich?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Schreiber?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Weissman?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Congratulations, Emily. So, welcome. We're excited to have you. Would you like to just give council a brief introduction? All right. We will meet, we will move the closed session to across the hall, so if anybody wishes to stay in council chambers during the closed session, they can. So we will move across the hall and then we will come back to reconvene.
And I'd say other staff, sorry, can, can go.
Is there a second on the revised motion? Yes, the second was, uh...
Yeah, I see.
Mahalovich. So, roll call, please. Fitzwater?
Aye.
Graham?
Aye.
Henry?
Aye.
Hussey?
Aye.
Kimna?
Aye.
Mahalovich?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Schreiber?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Weissman?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Congratulations, Emily. So, welcome. We're excited to have you. Would you like to just give council a brief introduction?
I have a question. How do you study... Oh, yeah. After attending University of Missouri, where I majored in marketing, I moved to St. Louis and worked for a marketing agency and met my husband and had two boys. And then we moved back here. And I've been here working with the state legislature, legislative research since 2005. So I've worked in a committee environment for a long time.
Great. Well, welcome. We're glad to have you.
Thank you.
Are there any council questions or comments?
So you work with Mickey?
Yeah. I started off in his office, yeah.
Right.
Yep.
Well, we're glad after a marathon meeting that you're still here with us in such enthusiasm. So, welcome, and we're glad to have you. So congratulations.
All right, thank you.
And now, at this time, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second. All right, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Because we're out of closed session, so we don't need a roll call. Thank you.